Okay, planning board, we are live. We are recording. Phone lines will remain off. Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to the town of East Hampton Planning Boards July, July. I guess I'm wishing, right? January twenty-second meeting. We have five matters on for work session tonight. We have very slim agenda for a regular meeting, but we'll get started with our work session items. The first of which is Bayberry Estates, which is a preliminary subdivision. Dan, that's yours and Jen, that's yours on this side, okay? Is the applicant here? Yeah, okay, great.
All right, well, good evening, board. So this is the application for Bayberry Estates. This was an application that we viewed about early 2024 and since subsequent reviews and now finally for the boards tonight. Just to give kind of a context and reminder where we're located. This is approximately seventeen acre lot located on four seventy-six Wayne Scott Northwest Road. It's located within the A-five Resident zoning district and also in several important areas of important environmental consideration. That includes the water resource or durable district, Suffolk County Pine Barrens and the groundwater management zone five, all of which identify its importance to groundwater protection and recharge the town's soil aquifer. There are large tracts of reserved land in the areas you can see right across, which are owned from town, either owned by the town of East Hampton or Suffolk County. But besides for that, it is mostly surrounded by other residential properties, which are mostly developed, which are also zoned as A-five at the time of this review. So the project itself is to subdivide this seventeen acre lot into three individual lots. In addition to preserving around seventy percent of the overall lot area, given that the parcel is located within the A-five Resident zoning district and the water recharge overall district, the town code does require for it to be subdivided as an open space subdivision, which approximately seventy percent of that to be preserved, which the applicants have complied with in the past and also with this review as well. During that board's previous review in 2024, there were several other minor comments issued more about the access. Some comments about the design, the overall more particulars of this application, which are kind of the primary focus of this evaluation. But before diving to those elements, I just wanted to bring a reminder to the board that this is an unlisted action pursuant to SECR, Chapter one twenty of the town code. During prior views, there was a request for EAF Part One to be submitted, which the applicants have since submitted for the board's review, and that's contained within the files. Planning Department reviewed most of, reviewed the EAF that was submitted and had a couple of comments in there about some items that need to be addressed. Those are outlined throughout the memo. And again, I'm happy to go further. Any of those should be needed. But ultimately, given that the planning board in the past has indicated that they have declared lead agency for this project, once those comments are kind of addressed, we're recommending that the planning board conduct a coordinated review of this application and begin coordinating with the other involved agencies. Now, they should be coordinated with the Suffolk County Department of Health Services and York State Department of Environmental Conservation. So in terms of those comments from the previous meeting, the first one had to do with kind of the, the developable area and the building of the lots themselves, really focusing around the actual building envelopes. So it was requested that the applicants pick the building envelopes on the property, which should avoid the areas of steep slopes. As you can tell from the subdivision map, those areas, let me drag it around, there you go. Are kind of these ones that are highlighted and colored and show that it's deeper contour lines. Because the town code requires those to be protected, not developable. The applicants, as you can tell from the plans, have complied with these requirements, showing the proposed building envelopes, and have also indicated the setbacks for those building envelopes. We found that these typically comply with those of lots of this similar size, which is that range between forty thousand and eighty-three thousand square feet, except for the steep slopes necessitate greater setbacks, which is something that we recommend are appropriate. The only point that we wanted to mention was the, there's previous requests that the map itself be annotated to indicate that the building envelopes have been designed primarily because of those steep slopes. Just to kind of avoid future ambiguity on that point. It doesn't seem as been addressed as part of this. It's something that we're recommending that the board should want to require as condition of preliminary approval. Should they choose to grant it, that could be something that could be required at that point. Going from there, the next comment had to do primarily with the reserved area. So the applicants had previously indicated this be dedicated to the town of East Hampton, and the board found that to be acceptable. So the planning department, we previously indicated that that was something that should be indicated on the map, which applicants have done, so there's no issue on that part. The only thing we wanted to make, just remind the board and the applicant is that, remind them just to coordinate with the town attorney's office as part of land acquisition management to kind of coordinate those next steps about actually dedicating that land and going from there. So going from that comment, the next way to do it with the actual access of parcels themselves. So during previous reviews, the planning department recommended that a common driveway be provided in order to avoid excessive clearing, reduce curb cuts and preserve traffic flow along Wayne Scott Northwest Road. As part of their latest submission, as you can see here, you can see they have added a common driveway area all kind of along these, this flag portion, the flag portions of these lots. It's situated within what's identified as an access utility easement, which was previously recommended. The applicants, in addition to this, have also submitted a common driveway plan. You've shown us big dimensions and details of the common driveway itself. We did have a couple small comments, well, to add in addition to this, as part of this. However, we did kind of talk to the applicant about this before the meeting. So that's something we're going to try to discuss in addition to maybe something that might be forthcoming in future kind of clarification about the design of it and make sure it's consistent between the maps and the common driveway plan. It was mentioned during previous reviews as well. But in terms of what's presented here tonight, so a couple of comments that we've had. First, we recommend that the sitting of the driveway appears to be the most appropriate location. You know, it's within northern yard of the project site or along these lots. And given that there's steep slopes located throughout more of the southern yard, it seems that this seems to be the best fitted for this lot in terms of what the town code kind of guides towards. The other comment we had is that, you know, they submitted the common driveway plan as requested, which was reviewed by the town consultant engineer, who recommended that these, the plans themselves satisfactorily address the comments that had been previously issued to them. So this was something that they're willing, found willing to sign off on. And finally, the only thing we noted was that in terms of the actual access utility easement, we were recommending, well, we're noting that as part of this process and access utility easement, setting forth the rights of access for each property in form acceptable to the plan board attorney would need to be reported as part of preliminary subdivision. An additional reminder, just that the utilities, according to the town code, should be placed below ground as part of the general policies for subdivisions within the town. Going back to the map itself, there was also some other comments that had to do with some of the requirements for preliminary subdivisions that are identified throughout the town code. We found the applicants addressed most of these, but there were still a few minor ones that didn't appear to be addressed the last time. First of these had to do with the requirement to identify the location of fire hydrants, wells or cistern locations, and a letter of approval from the appropriate department and or fire district regarding this. So we reviewed the map, it didn't, based on our view, it didn't seem to find the location of those items having provided on this submission. And some that were indicated, the applicants should have complied as part of this review. The only thing is if these features, for some reason, don't have to be required, we're just requesting that Fire Marshal sign off or Fire Department sign off be provided, just indicating that those aren't provided at this time. But otherwise, that was really the only comment with respect to those items. The only other thing we had in addition to this was there was an item regarding drainage calculations for the common driveway area itself, which wasn't indicated in the last review. The applicant has, with their common driveway plan, indicated, you know, has provided drainage calculations and specifications for the proposed area, which was reviewed by the town consultant engineer and also found to be satisfactory. So consequently to that, the planning department had no objections to the drainage plan or the, or this common driveway plan as currently presented. Furthermore, there was a minor comment about the, this map happens to be located within a certain vicinity of the airport that requires the applicants report an airport, nor is easement, essentially just acknowledging that there potential noise and issues of the airport that might create a potential impact on the development here. Now, that was something that was requested to be added to the map, just a notation indicating that, which it is located like kind of these subnotes here. So we found the applicant successfully complied with that request and generally recommended we appropriate for the playboards include the requirement that this easement, again, in a form acceptable to town attorney's office be recorded with Suffolk County as a condition of final, or just final subdivision approval if they choose to grant it. Going from there, kind of going back a little bit with the fire marshal aspects of it, because we had a few other comments about a note that there, the common driveway itself was required to have an interim vehicle emergency turnaround, sorry, emergency turnaround area and the turnoff area, given its length. Over five hundred feet. The applicants have revised their plans and including this accordingly. And again, recognizing the, and then recognizing that the board previously found, I read in the wrong section. Again, so recognize the applicants, they have revised their plans to include this. The town engineers also reviewed these as well and signed off on them. So the planning department recommends, again, just as a condition of fully approval, that that fire marshal's sign off be received as part of this. And that's something the plan board should discuss whether or not that approval is required for this point, I guess, in terms of this development of the driveways presented. Now, finally, there was a few other comments that were just kind of additional comments that we had after reviewing this and that weren't mentioned previously, but thought were relevant to bring up as part of this. The first had to do with the lot area requirements. So during previous reviews, there was an indication that the, the applicants indicated the lot area on the subdivision map and seemed to include both the lot itself and this flag portion. However, town code currently doesn't allow the flag portion to be included in the lot area. So the applicants have since revised this and indicated on their plans that they, that show calculations both with and without that, that flag portion of each lot. And, you know, given that the planning board had previously found the size, they have a configuration request subdivision to be appropriate and that these changes made were kind of to meet the town code, we had no objections to these aspects of the map as currently presented. From there, we also had a small comment on water supply and sanitary systems. We know during the previous review that the applicant revised their plans, include the picture of neighboring wells and sanitary systems around the subject property, which is part of those requirements for preliminary subdivisions. This is an important note, just to ensure that there are locations of the lot that would not, that would have sufficient setbacks, which are over one hundred fifty feet from existing water supply and sanitary systems. So lots one and two do appear to be in close proximity. However, we've also noted that Suffolk County Department of Health Services will have to review these and address compliance standards as part of their review for this aspect, and just something we want the applicants to take into consideration as well. And finally, there's a small comment that this is another project that would also require Suffolk County Planning Commission, given that it is within the Suffolk County Pine Barrens region. So that's something that will be referred to the Suffolk County for comments once planning board has accepted the overall plan. So summarizing everything together, it appears the applicants have responded to many of the requests previously issued by the planning board. You know, there's some minor updates required to the map, specifically those locations of fire hydrants, well or cisterns. In addition, the potential comments we talked about with the driveway that may have to be addressed as following this review. But ultimately, in addition to the need for SECR review at this time, again, this will also require their view of the Fire Marshal's office for compliance with ADA standards, fire safety and design requirements. And this doesn't have to appear to have been received at the time of this meeting. And from there, I guess I'm, yeah, moving for any questions and sorry, why are you?
Okay, thank you, Dan. Dan, would you like to be heard before we start our discussion?
Good evening. Thank you, board, and thank you, Dan, for your presentation. This is Dan Weaver from Walbridge Surveyors, representing the applicant on this project. Just a few things I want to add to the discussion. This was originally an application in 2022, not 2024. And at that time, the board did approve the general configuration and lot design of the subdivision, including the access easement as currently shown. It has been modified some to add the turnoff areas that were requested by the Fire Marshal's office. But other than that, there's always been an access easement over the flag strips in this general configuration and was generally approved by the board in 2022. The dedication of easements, as discussed, would not be a problem. That's usually not done until, basically, it's a condition of accrual. So it wouldn't be something we would dedicate at this time. It would be something that we would dedicate upon completion of the subdivision and before the map is recorded, it would be a requirement of, you know, but I don't think it needs to be particularly addressed now. As far as the fire cistern and fire well, if the Fire Marshal's office believed one should exist, we have no problem adding one. The reason there are none shown, there are none within proximity of the project. The, when the Suffolk County Water Authority expanded water service in this part of Wayne Scott did not come this far north past the airport. So there are no hydrants in this area, but we will add a cistern or a fire well if needed in the, in the common driveway. That's pretty much all I had to add to the discussion, and I'm just looking forward to hearing what you have to come back with.
Thanks, Dan. Jen?
Thanks, Dan and Stan. I think this is a pretty, you know, I don't see any real issues with this application. I think that, you know, the open space is good. The, you know, there are minor issues really that I think need to be just addressed. So I really don't have any issues. Does anyone else have any?
I have a question. Is Suffolk County Water have plans to expand their water main lines up that far north? I hope. Not that you work for Suffolk.
Not that we're aware of, and, you know, the health department would review that as part of their review. If the water main has been extended, then they would require us to hook up. But, you know, we're not within distance of what is required for a hookup. So at this point, the intention is not to hook up because it is too far away.
Yeah. Right, gotcha, okay.
The water main line would go right on Wayne Scott Northwest Road. I mean, what do you mean too far? It's not far.
It's not far enough up the road, it's down.
That's right. Projecting to the future.
Any other questions or comments, Bruce, Reed? We're good, okay. I guess the biggest remaining thing is getting the short form EAF done and submitted, so we can get the SECR, the SECR review going. So Dan, I think that's probably the next to do. You know, thanks for remedying many of the other things that the other Dan brought up in his review.
Yeah, just, I will make the changes to the EAF as asked for. That doesn't seem to be a problem. We can get that into the board immediately.
Great, thanks. All right, so we'll go to the questions. The first of which is, should the applicant revise the short form environmental assessments as indicated by the planning department? Once the revised short form environmental assessment form is submitted, does the planning board wish to initiate the coordinated review with involved agencies?
Yes.
Yes, we are, we are already declared lead agency on this previously. Does the board agree that as a condition of final subdivision approval, if they choose to grant it, will be the requirement to annotate the map to recognize that the envelopes have been designed to avoid the areas of steep slopes, as Dan mentioned earlier?
Yes.
Should the applicant coordinate with town attorney's office and Department of Land Acquisition and Management for next steps regarding the dedication of the easement?
Yes.
In due course, right, yes? Does the planning board agree that in condition of final subdivision approval, if they choose to grant it, will be the requirement to submit proof of recording of an access utility easement, setting forth the rights of access for each property in a form acceptable to the planning board's attorney? Yes? Should the applicant address the additional items needed for the preliminary map, including the addition of fire hydrant, well or cistern locations, along with letter of approval from the appropriate fire department and or fire district? Yes, you agreed to that. Does the planning board agree that a condition of final subdivision approval, if they choose to grant it, will be the requirement to be, to submit proof of recording for the airport, airport noise easement? And that the noise easement must be in a form acceptable to the attorney's office? Town attorney's office, yes. Can't avoid it. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll see you again. All right, so next up is the Royal Atlantic North Outdoor Canopy Lounge Beds. And that is, you, Will, and Jen has that, and is the applicant present? Okay, great. Take it away, Will.
So this is a preliminary site plan application that has been made regarding five proposed canopy lounge beds at the Royal Atlantic Resort and Lot Talk. You can see here, it's south of the traffic circle and slips through the water.
Will, can you move the microphone a little closer? Does that move?
Is it better? Is that better?
No, not really, no.
Is it on?
Yeah, it's definitely on. You might have to actually speak into the microphone.
I'll try speaking closer. So because this is a preliminary site plan application, technical details, including ADA compliance, will be reviewed by the town consulting engineer upon formal submission of the application. Here's another aerial. The proposed cool side lounge beds are approximately a hundred square feet each and eight feet tall. The lounge beds are proposed to be located on an existing grass area just south of the existing pool and pool patio. The pool guard station is proposed to be moved north onto the pool patio and closer to the pool. Per Town Geographic Informational Systems aerial imagery seen here, it appears the proposed lounge beds were already present on site when the most recent aerial images were taken in early 2024. The applicant should explain if these structures already exist on site. The partial site plans submitted do not depict many features required by the town code section, necessary elements of site plans, including property lines, lot area, floor area of buildings and structures, setbacks between buildings and structures, locations of easements, parking, lighting, photography, structure elevations, or locations of any easements. The applicant should submit a revised site plan depicting these in order to facilitate a more complete review of the proposed work. No survey was submitted as part of this application, resulting in a lack of information required for a full and complete review. The applicant should submit a survey depicting all existing and proposed structures, parking spaces, building coverage and lot coverage labeled to proceed with this review. As the proposed work does not require variances, does not require approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, is not habitable, is five hundred square feet in size, will not affect parking requirements, does not appear to require any unusual planning considerations and has not created public controversy, this project may be considered a minor site plan upon formal submission. In conclusion, the applicant should clarify the presence of the lounge bed structures and submit a revised site plan and survey, which include all existing and proposed structures, coverage and parking.
Great, thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to be heard? If you would please state your name for the record and, and address and spell your last name, please.
My name's Anthony Kalimnios. It's K-A-L-I-M-N-I-O-S. I represent the Royal Atlantic. We put those there in 2023. We really just thought they were lawn furniture. We actually got them from Gurney's, who was tossing them. Revitalized them and put them in our courtyard, that was it. And then a year later, we got a violation and I wound up in court. So I'm really just here to find out if I need a permit, then I'll go through with what I have to do to get it. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen, it's you again.
That's me again. Thank you so much for coming and for trying to remedy this. I have just a couple of questions. I understand that you, you know, you put them in there there. What is the pool guard station? Where is that?
Red dot.
The red dot. And is that the lifeguard state, the lifeguard chair? Okay, so you're proposing to move that, so it's just, is it like just a chair? Okay, so yeah, so I think the big thing is to get these, you know, legalized, we need to see the whole site plan and survey. Because without that, it's hard to really comment on it, I think.
Any other comments around the table?
I think without a survey.
Yeah, it's hard to, yeah.
Yeah, we need the survey. Yeah, so these are structures, they do require a permit. So thanks for following up with, with this. And yeah, that's really our next step, so I plan to survey. So we'll go through our questions. And you can follow up later with the planning departments if you have any other questions about the process. Should the applicant provide a survey depicting all existing and proposed structures?
Yes.
Okay. Should the applicant submit a revised site plan depicting the entire property and comply with necessary elements of site plans upon formal submissions?
Yes.
Right. Does the board agree this project may be considered a minor site plan upon formal submission?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So Lou, you're on now. You're at this meeting going forward here. So our next matter is the Three Mile Harbor Affordable Housing. And Will, that's you again.
A modification has been submitted proposing minor changes to the Affordable Housing Complex located at two eighty-six and two ninety-three Mile Harbor Road. The applicant proposes to correct a mistake made during building and replace the.
Oh, I'm sorry, hang on, Will. Is the applicant here?
Ah, okay.
Thank you very much. Sorry.
All right. The applicant proposes to correct a mistake made during building and replace the fence on top of the sewage treatment plant retaining wall with the previously approved four foot railing. Additionally, the applicant proposes to add vegetation on top of the retaining wall and modify the meandering path to comply with ADA requirements. The sewage treatment plant has a retaining wall which reaches a maximum height of approximately six feet. And you can see that on the site plan as this dark gold line. This modification proposes to replace the six feet, six foot tall fence on top of that retaining wall with the previously approved four foot railing to provide a permanent safety solution. Due to the height of the wall and the grade changes surrounding it, a railing is necessary for safety. The planning department has no objection to the railing aside from aesthetic impacts of the wall. Just gotta pull up a picture. The planning department recommends additional vegetation be added to screen areas of the wall, which are most visible from public spaces and navigation areas on the site. If the planning board agrees, the planning department recommends as a condition of approval, the applicant submit a revised landscape plan with additional screening in this area. The path which runs from building one to the property line on Three Mile Harbor, seen here, has been modified to comply with ADA requirements. The path has had the pitch and slope of some areas changed to ensure accessibility. The Fire Marshal and town consulting engineer have confirmed the changes to the path are appropriate. The planning department notes these changes are relatively minor and overall, the overall path remains consistent with the original design and recommends the changes are acceptable. In conclusion, the board should consider if additional vegetative screening should be added to shield parts of the retaining wall from visible areas on site.
Thank you, Will. Does the applicant wish to be heard? State your name, address and spell your last name for the record, please.
Walter Beal, B-E-A-L. I run Georgia Construction. Eighty-one Salisbury Avenue, Garden City, New York. Firstly, I'd like to apologize for not being present last week. That's squarely on me. No excuse, I missed an email, there's no excuse for that. And I made a point to be here this evening myself. Secondly, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the planning board for its reasonableness and its thoughtfulness throughout this entire process, which is years long. And the good news is that it culminated in, there are fifty. there are 50 affordable housing units that are occupied at this property as we speak, which is significant. And we need more of that. With regard to this particular modification, we are happy to screen the lower half of that wall with whatever the planning board or natural resources necessary, and we'll update our documents accordingly. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Beal.
Thank you.
Lou?
Yeah, hopefully this is the last time we'll hear on this application. It seems like it's an application that just won't die or get approved.
Agreed.
I think it's, you know, I, I'm all in favor of this project and I think this, this is just a minor last hurrah. But since, you know, my suggestion was to screen that wall, the wall looks terrible. Concrete, it's raw state. The aesthetics are horrible. So there it is. I mean, you can see. So the solution which the applicant is willing to implement is needed. Now, you mentioned the bottom of the wall is getting screened.
The upper portion of the wall, we added those arborvitaries on the most recent application at the top of the wall. And that orange netting is temporary, which we hope to replace with a black vinyl coated steel rail of four foot high, which will be not necessarily, obviously, move it like that.
And have you determined how you're gonna screen? I hopefully get fully screened, that you won't be able to see any of that horrible looking wall.
As I said, Will, we'll accommodate what the planning department or natural resources thinks is necessary.
Well, then there's nothing else to be said.
You're not a fan of brutalist architecture? It's all the range right now.
It's really lovely.
Thanks, Lou. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I guess my question was, the screening is on, proposed on top of the wall or in front of the wall?
Down low.
So in front of the concrete.
Down, in front of the concrete.
Perfect. Absolutely. All in favor of that.
Yeah.
Anyone else? I would just, you know, concur that it's, you know, work with the planning department on this, but I would concur that something that is, you know, that covers most of this is really in order. And that the deer's don't need, of course, but the planning department can direct you on that. But thank you for accommodating us on this. I appreciate it.
Yeah, there are gonna be more trees than that.
More trees at the top?
Yeah.
More trees more than the six feet.
Yeah. Do you want to add more on top?
Well, no, I'm.
Okay.
More along the bottom.
Hold your second.
Yeah. So I think you understand what it is that we want, and the planning department does as well. So if you can work with Mr. Beal on determining what the plant species should be, we'll make it happen. Can I ask one question? You'd mentioned on the top, you're replacing the black fence or explain to me what, what.
So on the original, so we believe we, or then put a eight foot high or six foot high PVC vinyl fence on top of that wall.
Okay.
And that was wrong. But what was on the original documents and still is on the approved drawings is a four foot tall vinyl coated black steel railing.
Okay.
So that's a six foot, six foot drop. That's why I have the temporary fence there right now until I have this approved. Because we need, it needs, it requires a railing for safety purposes.
Okay. So even the railing will be screened from the other, because of the other plants there, right?
Behind it.
The ones that are currently there.
Right.
Yeah.
Behind it.
Because I assume the path is on the other side of these, this row of.
There's really no path. It's, it's.
It's on the other side of the road.
It's the field of the sewage treatment plant.
The black railing.
No one should really even be up there, but.
Okay.
So, so I did not.
And people see the black railing.
The drawing, the approved, the approved drawing shows the rail on top of the wall itself, not behind those hedges.
Okay.
So let's see the fence. I can do whatever you want. Until these guys are.
They have to have the rail.
Have to have the rail.
Yeah, the rail. Okay. All right. So I think we trust that between you and the planning department, you know, you'll figure out how to interpret our comments and do something appropriate here within code. So thank you for that.
Maybe next time, hopefully the last time. Thank you.
Good. Thanks very much. All right. So our next matter is Springs Brewery.
Wait, do we have any questions?
Oh, questions. Oh, man, I'm not. Just anxious to talk about that brewery. Does the planning board agree that the changes to the meandering path for ADA compliance are acceptable?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Does the planning board agree the new railing on top of the sewage treatment plant retaining wall is appropriate?
Yes.
And required. Does the planning board agree that additional screening of the sewage treatment plant retaining wall is appropriate focused on publicly prominent views of the wall? And that a revised landscaping plan should be submitted for review by the planning department?
Yes.
Does the planning board agree this application is complete? Once these things are done, yeah.
Done, yeah.
Ending all this stuff, yeah.
All right, good.
Thank you.
God willing. Thank you. All right. So the Springs Brewery, that is Chris Stecker and Lou again, the board. And I see the applicant is here.
Good to go. All right. Well, this is the initial review of the Springs Brewery site plan application. Let me just share my screen. You folks can see it there? So the subject parcel is own NB Neighborhood Business. It is 10,932 square feet large, quarter acre. And it contains an existing one story building slab on grade that was previously used as an auto body repair shop. The parcel is not within any town overlay districts, however, it is adjacent to the Springs Historic District, the Harbor Protection Overlay District, as well as the Akavonic Harbor Critical Environmental Area. So going into the application itself. So the site plan application has been submitted to remodel the existing 2,680 square foot building from an auto body repair shop to a brewery. The existing building with aluminum siding, two garage doors, and the subject parcel had five existing parking spaces when it was a repair shop. The remodeled building would include a brewery, retail area, three bathrooms, employee office, pantry, and separate areas for dry and cold storage. The saw changes are proposed to remove and seal off one of the existing garage doors, paint the metal siding off white, and add windows around the front and sides of the existing building. Paving improvements are also proposed, including a permeable driveway and parking area, which would replace the existing asphalt and a new walkway and patio on the exterior shown here. The proposal includes removing the existing septic system and installing an innovative and alternative onsite wastewater treatment system, an IA septic. And the applicant has applied for the use to be considered a wholesale business use with an accessory retail area and a brewery. Per Town Code, there are two uses related to wholesale business, one for lumber and building products, the other to retail beverage distribution and wholesale bakery operations. I'll further discuss the proposed use classification in a moment. Regarding the existing conditions on site, just wanted to pull up this photo from a site visit. This was on December 26, 2024. A walk-in refrigerator was absorbed towards the west corner along the rear property line. And this should be added to plans, or the applicant should just confirm that it will be removed, just given that it appears the site is currently operating out of compliance with this structure being present. Regarding SECR, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, this is a type two action pursuant to SECR and the Town Code. The product is considered a reuse of a commercial structure where the use is permitted under zoning and it does not exceed any thresholds of a type one action. There's no additional review subject to type two actions. So with respect to the change in use, the existing use of the auto body repair shop is defined by Town Code as garage repair. The proposal includes changing the existing use to the uses wholesale business, brewery, and an accessory retail area, as I mentioned. Breweries are not specifically permitted use by Town Code or defined, however, a brewery does exist within the town, and it offers a relevant precedent for consideration. So we reference a building inspector determination dated January 3, 2013, issued by then senior building inspector Tom Spriato. And this included the determination that the Montauk Brewery site plan application qualified as a retail store use. That determination noted that the onsite brewery at that location was primarily for walk-in customers and beer purchased to go. And it was considered similar to a bagel store, and that's with respect to the floor layout as well as the operations of the retail nature. There was no kitchen or bar proposed. The applicant has stated in their project narrative that the intent for this location, quote, mainly a beer production space with a small public retail space where items can be purchased to go and minimally for onsite enjoyment, end quote. The planning department notes the similarities between this and the Montauk Brewery site plan, and the applicant should provide further details on the proposed operations to facilitate the confirmation of an appropriate use classification. And I'll further discuss this with the project description. So wholesale business, which is what the applicant applied for, is a special permit use and retail stores are also a permitted use in the neighborhood business zone. The planning department has no objection to the proposed application being classified as these uses, pending additional clarification of the project description from the applicant. It's noted that the special permit use wholesale retail beverage distribution does not have specific standards and safeguards under Town Code, however, it would still be subject to the procedure for special permit uses. So with respect to the project description, the narrative details the retail space will include minimal indoor seating for customers to sample beverages, and the business will provide a year-round location for people to socialize. The planning department notes that the board gave unanimous general support to the year-round use during the preliminary review for the Springs Brewery in 2021. And the applicant, the applicant should confirm that they intend to sell some alcoholic beverages to be consumed within the retail area and detail the number of indoor seats that will be provided. The applicant should also confirm the proposed use of the patio seating that's indicated here. You can see my cursor. And whether the seating will be used for onsite consumption. Finally, the applicant should also confirm the use of the pantry area and if it will be used to serve food to onsite patrons. The revised project description should also detail the type of permit the applicants intend to obtain obtained from the New York State Liquor Authority to allow the planning board to better understand the proposed operations. With respect to coverage, which is the next issue, the applicant did not include any calculations for building coverage or total lot coverage. The building coverage is approximately 2,680 square feet and should be added to the revised submission. The planning department calculated the proposed lot coverage by subtracting the area of the proposed structures and the existing building from the total lot area. The proposed coverage is approximately 9,414 square feet, which equates to 86%, which exceeds the maximum of 70% for this parcel in the NB zone. The applicant should explain whether they intend to meet coverage requirements or if they will seek a variance from the zoning board of appeals. And the revised submission should include a survey with annotated calculations for building coverage and total coverage. With respect to the sanitary system, the proposed IA system, the applicants must receive approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, SEDHS, for the proposed IA septic. The total proposed hydraulic load is 696 gallons per day, which includes 500 gallons per day for brewing process, the brewery process. The planning department notes SEDHS does require a separate permit and disposal facilities for brewery processed waters, which will determine the allowable gray water load. The applicant should consult with SEDHS and apply to that agency early in the planning process. Per Suffolk County Sanitary Code Article 6 for commercial projects, the population density equivalent is calculated by multiplying the gross lot area in acres by 600 gallons per day in groundwater management zone four. For the subject parcel, the population density equivalent would be approximately 150 gallons per day. In review of the estimated potential demand flow, the planning department notes that the existing building at 2,680 square feet, the applicant has applied a mix of density load multipliers. This is used to calculate the allowable load. They use wet store with food and winery brewery. And that would result in a proposed flow of approximately 100 gallons per day for the density flow. So just the septic, the sewage output, which is below the allowable flow for the property. But the planning department notes for this application that the additional proposed gray load increases the total hydraulic load to much higher than the allowable flow for the property. Also, the submitted sanitary flow calculations use a gross floor area of 2,717 square feet, when in fact, the building is 2,680 square feet. So the revised submission should reflect the accurate gross floor area. The applicant should explain if they have already submitted to SEDHS and if this level of flow will be permitted on the property. The SEDHS will confirm the flow rates applied to the different spaces if those rates are appropriate. The project narrative includes details on conserving water by, quote, harvesting hot water from our exchanger for brewing and harvesting gray water from the large roof for cleaning, end quote. These systems were not observed on the submitted plan and may be more applicable to the building permit review. The applicant should clearly indicate the mentioned systems in the revised submission, including anticipated hydraulic loads for each system. The applicant is advised that additional approvals are required from the SEDHS. Moving on to parking, I'm just going to pan over to the engineer plans. So for parking, the submitted parking calculations indicate the required number of parking space for the retail brewery is one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area. The existing 2,080, 2,680 square foot building is proposed to be remodeled as a retail use, which would in fact require one parking space per 180 square feet of gross floor area per Town Code. Therefore, if it's classified as retail, the proposal would require 15 parking spaces, whereas the proposal only includes nine parking spaces, including the one required handicap space. The applicant should revise the parking calculations to accurately reflect the required parking, and if compliant, parking cannot be accommodated on site. A variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required. With respect to site navigation and traffic, the existing two-way driveway on the east side of the building is 18.44 feet wide, where access driveways on non-residential properties must have a minimum unobstructed width of 20 feet. But the planning department notes that the most recent site plan approval from 1988 for this property references a town engineer review, which determined that the minimum driveway width of only 16 feet was required to allow for emergency vehicle access and other service vehicles. Given the previous approval for the narrower driveway, the chief fire marshal and chief building inspector reviewed the existing driveway and did not find any issues. Therefore, the existing unobstructed width of 18.44 feet is considered acceptable and will not require a variance. The proposed drive aisle along these parking spaces towards the rear of the property is 23.07 feet, whereas Town Code requires 24 feet of width when parking spaces are at a 90-degree angle with the aisle. So the applicant should reconfigure the proposed parking to comply with Town Code, and the planning department notes that a variance application to the ZBA is not typical for parking lot dimensions. Therefore, the applicant should find a compliant solution. Regarding the handicap space, the town engineer noted that the space could be switched with the location of the access aisle just to avoid any physical conflict with opening a door to the vehicle, so it would not be obstructed by the wall. That's not a requirement, but that is just a suggestion, suggestion for the ADA space provided. Moving on to drainage and stormwater control, the proposed stormwater control involves replacing the existing asphalt driveway and parking lot with gravel to increase permeability, and also proposes the installation of four stormwater dry wells toward the southern corner of the property. Those are shown on this plan. Those are shown on this plan. The town consulting engineer reviewed the submitted rating and drainage plan and found it to comply with design standards and the requirements of town code. With respect to landscaping, the planning department is satisfied that six of the seven proposed plant species are native, which requires, which the town considers approvable for revegetation, although it's not necessary on the subject parcel, it's clearly beneficial to the natural environment that native species are proposed. The landscaping key should include symbology for each plant species to indicate which species is proposed. And the applicant should confirm the osmanthus fragrance are not planned to be planted in the native garden. However, there is no objection to it being used, given it is not invasive. It's just not native. Also, the landscaping plan should indicate whether plants are proposed or existing. Note that one tree is indicated as existing along the southern property line. The revised landscaping plan should provide details on proposed screening and indicate what method of screening would be used for exterior utility equipment along the southern facade of the building. That's here. And the planning department notes that the engineer plans show a proposed fence enclosure for this area, whereas the architect landscaping plans appear to indicate plants used for screening. So that should be made consistent in the revised submission. In summary, a revised comprehensive landscaping plan should be submitted that meets all the elements listed in this evaluation. And the planning department notes that naturally occurring vegetation should not be indicated on this, given that the site is fully cleared. With respect to the proposed outdoor lighting, the number of proposed light fixtures is different between the lighting plan P, the annotation on the lighting plan, and the lighting plan itself. There you go. Revised submission should ensure the number of fixtures is consistent, and they should also indicate if the existing outdoor lighting will be removed. Aside from the issues mentioned, the comprehensive lighting plan appears to comply with all provisions of town code and the planning board guidelines for exterior lighting. With respect to noise generation and noise standards, the applicant should provide manufactured manufacturer specification sheets with sound data in decibels A for the exterior equipment for the proposed generator, air conditioner, and glycol chiller to show the compliance of town code noise standards. The locations of the mentioned equipment are not indicated consistently between the engineering and architect plans. And as I mentioned, the fence enclosures on the engineer plans, whereas plantings are shown on the architect plans. The location of each equipment should be consistent, I'll note that the generator was in different locations on both plans. AC unit was different on both plans, and then the glycol chiller is not indicated on engineering plans, however, it was indicated along that southern facade with the architect plans, so we just need all that exterior equipment to be indicated consistently and the manufacturer sheets to make sure that no none of the noise standards would be violated by this proposal. Regarding the engineering comments, the town consulting engineer reviewed the plans and issued several comments with respect to the parking and navigation, which I've already discussed. Regarding the proposed retaining wall construction, and this retaining wall is shown in dark gray, sort of horseshoes around the rear property line. And the one to be removed and replaced would be along the street here and also going along the side property line, you can all see that. And the engineer just noted with the construction of these, there is concern that this could encroach onto the adjacent properties or that the workers would need to be on the adjacent properties to complete this work. And these issues must all be addressed and the full report is attached with this evaluation. Regarding the office of fire prevention, the fire marshal findings indicate the proposed project is near public water and fire hydrants provide adequate supply for firefighting purposes. However, their findings did also detail the project is not compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, and requires revisions to ensure that adequate clearance is provided for the egress to the ADA bathroom. With respect to other approvals that this application will need, the applicant is advised that the architectural review board approval is required for all commercial structures which require site plan approvals except for parking lots and driveways. And this review will also address the proposed change to the exterior color of the building. The office of fire prevention, fire marshal must approve for your compliance with the ADA, as I mentioned, as well as New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. The ZBA is to be determined, the zoning board, for the number of parking spaces, a minimum requirement, as well as the total lot coverage. Suffolk County Department of Health Services for the proposed IA system, as mentioned. Getting into the necessary elements of a site plan, the following lettered items from town code detail the required items that are missing from the application. And just note that the planning board has the authority to waive one or more materials for good cause shown. Beginning with A, the adjacent land ownership should be indicated on plans. B, the existing walk in refrigerator in the west corner of the parcel should be indicated, or the applicant should confirm that it will be removed. The walkway in the front yard should be indicated as proposed and the existing walkway to be removed. That's just given their different shapes, it's clear that this is a new walkway. If an enclosure fence is proposed for the exterior utility equipment, it should be indicated on both sets of plans, which I've mentioned. For C, the lot areas should be indicated and confirmed with a certified survey for this property. For D, the front and rear property line setbacks for the existing building should be indicated. And inaccurate side property line setbacks for the existing building should be removed. The accurate figure of eighteen point four four feet for the northern side yard should remain. And the side yard property line setbacks for the southern yard should be added. And these are just the incorrect measurements that should be removed, there's, there's some errors there. D, for E, regarding fire hydrants, the location of the existing fire hydrant front in the adjacent parcel should be indicated. F, for parking sidewalks and curving, as I mentioned, the parking aisle width of twenty three point oh seven feet does not conform with the twenty four foot minimum. And curb cuts should also be indicated on the plans. With respect to G, there is no signage proposed, and the applicant should confirm, given a new business is being proposed. With respect to H on comprehensive lighting, the applicant should confirm if the existing exterior lighting will be removed. And the proposed quantity of fixtures should be made consistent with the revised lighting plan. K, the revised landscaping plan should include symbolic H and indicate which plants are proposed. And the applicant should confirm if existing bushes in the front and southerly side yard will be removed. For N, regarding elevations of buildings and structures, we are missing elevation drawings for the retaining wall to be removed and replaced. The proposed retaining wall and the fence around the exterior utility equipment along the southern facade of the existing building is proposed. Also noted is the digital submission for the architectural plans is not accurately to scale. In conclusion, this is the initial review of the site plan application to remodel the existing one story building from an auto body repair shop to a retail use for brewery. The applicant should discuss their intent for the proposed parking configuration and whether alternative configurations are being considered. The applicant should also detail if any applications or discussions have been initiated with the SCDHS for the proposed IA system. The board should discuss the anticipated impact the proposal would have on the surrounding community and whether the proposal is compatible. The planning department notes, as I mentioned, the boards during the preliminary review gave unanimous general support to the application pending the resolution of concerns regarding the proposed parking and sanitary system. Planning department advises applicant to make a revised submission based on this evaluation and the board's feedback.
Thank you very much, Chris, for that very comprehensive and thorough review of the project. Does the applicant wish to be heard? Name and address, please, and spell your last names.
Gunner Burke, B U R K E, for West Way, East Hampton.
Lindsay Reichart, L I, or sorry, Reichart, R E I C H A R T, also for West Way. Good evening, chairman and members of the board. I'm Lindsay Reichart and this is Gunner Burke. We founded Springs Brewery in twenty twenty after several years of home brewing. My family has lived in Springs for many years, founding and leading the Springs Fire Department, as well as the Springs Food Pantry. My dad, who also attended Springs and East Hampton High Schools like me, built and opened the shop thirty five years ago and has continued to do the auto body work at the shop himself to this day. About ten years ago, when my dad began to consider retirement, he initially planned to sell the building, securing a future for my parents. In addition to brewers, Gunner and I also work in architecture, Gunner on residential and hospitality projects, and me on cultural and community oriented projects. Our project actually began as a reimagining of my father's auto body shop. And when Gunner and I envisioned the future of this space, we thought, given the location, that rather than sell it, it could be opportunity to use the space to serve the community and offer the beer that we're making at home and offer that quality craft beer to the community and create a welcoming environment for all. In just a few years through our hard work, our small business has grown to become a cornerstone of the Springs farmers market, as well as the community. Our dedication to our craft has created well loved products that are available at local restaurants and markets, as well as restaurants in New York City, several of which are on the top fifty lists of the best restaurants in twenty twenty four. We are devoted to supporting local organizations like Quail Hill Farm, Amber Waves Farm, and the Springs Food Pantry, and to fostering a cultural, culture of sustainability and collaboration in everything we do. We believe strongly in the good that comes from community minded year round businesses in our community. And as our business evolves, the need for a production space of our own is paramount to our own growth and success as a business.
We are working with Britten Bistrain, Blind Use Solutions, and David Rhodes of TF Engineering. So I have some comments on the responses to the comments that I'll just go through. You know, this is an existing commercial site, and we see that, you know, the majority of the comments can be summarized as minor revisions to adjust to the proposed use. We look forward to working with the board to make the minor revisions to submission, so we can quickly begin to realize the goals of our twenty twenty five business plan. We are a small family business, right now it's just the two of us. You know, we're not figureheads for wealthy investors or anything, you know, it's just us. So because of this, we, you know, ask for, we need to be incredibly budget conscious in this whole process and, you know, ask that everything be, you know, time efficiency in this, in this process as much as possible. The, under the existing conditions, the refrigerator that's currently there is not part of the proposed site plan. The change in use in project description sections, there are a few questions in there. So the project is first and foremost a production facility and brick and mortar home for our existing wholesale business. We currently contract brew at a facility in Riverhead, but we plan to produce the entirety of our products at this facility. We plan to invite the public into the designated retail space only, and we propose sixteen seats where products can be purchased to go along with limited onsite tastings. The patio seating will be used, is proposed to be used by the public in conjunction with that retail use. The licenses from the SLA that we plan to obtain are farm brewer license, which authorizes the licensee to operate a brewery for the manufacture of seventy five thousand barrels of New York State labeled beer. In addition to that, we also plan to get the micro brewer license, which authorizes licensee to operate a brewery for the manufacture of up to seventy five thousand barrels of beer annually. Regarding the concerns on lot coverage, we will amend the site plan to adhere to the seventy percent coverage. The current coverage is seventy percent total coverage. The, our intent with the creating the pathways through the site is to contribute to a pedestrian friendly and park like landscape. So we are, we will look to the board for permeable strategies to create pathways that maybe don't contribute to the coverage, if that's possible. Yeah, regarding the concerns on sanitary systems, we do have our applications submitted into the county. And we plan to work with them as necessary to ensure the design is in compliance. The water, the water use savings and strategies that I mentioned, or that we mentioned in the in the letter for reusing harvesting water, those do not, those are not part of the the sanitary calculations, that, those are just kind of strategies I wanted to highlight to show how, you know, we're committed to sustainability and and industry leading kind of processes that save water usage in that regard. Our engineer, David, will speak to some of the concerns that were brought up. He's here tonight. Then regarding the parking, site navigation and traffic, we proposed the combined wholesale and retail use for acquired, which creates, you know, nine spaces which are provided on the site plan. We believe this proposal is in keeping with the previously approved Montauk Brewing in, in, you know, kind of same strategy, so we're proposing five parking spots that would be dedicated for the retail area, that's the the size would dictate those five spots. Plus two for employee parking, because as you can see on our plan, most of the the vast majority of the wholesale space in the back is storage and would not, there would typically just be one person working back there. The drive aisle deficiency that was brought up will be addressed by allowing the car front to overhang the proposed retaining wall in the back, currently it's the dimension starts after that retaining wall, so we think that can be easily fixed. The ADA parking, we will work with our engineer on updating that strategy. Parking space number one was flagged as potentially being an awkward position, and we will propose that that space is a staff only space with minimal anticipated daily use to minimize any kind of traffic concerns. The, and then the landscaping plan, we will update for the comments. And then David, can you speak to some of the sanitary?
Good evening, my name is David Rhodes, R H O A D E S, I'm with PF Engineering, Seventeen Main Street, Sag Harbor, New York. I just want to address a couple of items that were in the TAM, just so we can have them, make sure they're clear. It does state in there and in the health department standards that separate permit and disposal is required for the processed water. We're proposing a system on the east side for the processed water, where the one on the west side is for the IA for the bathrooms and kitchen. The current policy with the health department is that both of those systems can be permitted under the same application and the same permit, there's no need to have them separate right now, so that was confirmed with just yesterday, so. Is talking about the, the proposed kitchen load and the hydraulic load increases the flow above the allowable. That's not the case, the health department only requires that the density load be underneath the allowable. The Health Department only requires that the density load be underneath the allowable. Kitchen loads, gray water loads and, and processed water are excluded from any density calculation. So the, as was stated earlier, it was 150 is the allowable, 100.8 is the actual density, and this project is under the 150. So it meets the Health Department standards.
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt. On the gray water, are there same type of maximums or minimums that are, that they have as they do with the flow rate?
No, there are no.
You can have as much gray water as you want.
That is true. Yes. The reason is, is because there's no, the whole reason why the densities were set up is because it was all based on a nitrogen loading. And nitrogen all comes from your urine, which comes in your, your normal bathroom. So there is no nitrogen in your gray water, kitchen or processed water.
Why bother measuring the gray water at all? Every time we, we get an application, you see the gray water numbers as well. So why have those if there's?
Because we still have to dispose of it. So it's, we still have to make the system big enough to handle the gray water, but it's not required to be under the density calculation. So the system has to be big enough to handle all that flow. And that's why we have to design the septic system for the total hydraulic load, but it doesn't have to be under the allowable. So I just wanted to clarify that because it seemed a little bit unclear on this. As far as swapping the ADA parking and the aisle, it's very common practice to always have the aisle on a single ADA parking space and on a van-accessible parking space on the right side of the car. More important with a van-accessible vehicle because typically on the passenger side is where your ramp comes out or your lift comes out. And you want that ramp or lift to go down into the aisle. So it's, it's, it's more common than not to put that on the right-hand side if you got a single space or van accessible. And in this case, if we swap them, if somebody is getting out of that passenger side, they're right on that property, right where the wall is. So our, I feel our location, our configuration is a better situation. So as far as the constructing the retaining wall, it is tight and it is tough, but you know, it can be done. These soils can handle a three-foot vertical cut. And as far as, you know, they can use, you know, plywood for shoring instead of, you know, the big forms and stuff. It can be done. We do them all the time and people don't seem to have a problem with it. So I don't see it as being a huge issue on this place. Contractor just needs to be careful and make sure that they don't, you know, get on other people's property. So only retaining wall. Well, so these are all fill walls. So there, we have to go down three feet to get to the footing and then we come up a couple of feet. I don't recall off the top of my head what the heights are. I'd have to go back. So all we're excavating down to the bottom of footing is three feet. I think those are the only items that I wanted to cover tonight, unless you guys have any questions regarding anything else.
I'm sure we will have some, so stay close. We'll have our discussion, which is going to leave.
Yeah, I just want to say that I was impressed with the applicant's narrative. I think they had a lot of things to say that comport with the interest of good planning, such as stress sustainability, community harmony, environmentally friendly practices. So I hope that that's what you finally come through with and stick to that. You mentioned that the establishment will cater to a minimal customer base, both indoor and outdoor, serving low alcohol beer. And also you're manufacturing other products like kombucha, salsa, things like that. Which, you know, it's great. I, you know, that sounds wonderful. The one thing that, the one concern that I think maybe we need to get a better idea of is what kind of congregation of people will there be? What kind of atmosphere do you want to create, that kind of thing? And you know what I'm getting to, you know? If it starts to become a party scene, loud noise type of thing, then that's not something that I think is in harmony with the, the community.
Yeah, that's absolutely not what we're proposing. This is a very, very low-key, very refined experiences about tasting the beer that we're producing there, along with other products that do not contain alcohol. And yeah, minimal indoor seating, very, not a bar atmosphere whatsoever.
I think you, I think the question of coverage was answered so there won't be a necessity for variance with the ZBA on that. So you know, the wholesale and retail business classification requires that you meet general standards of the special permit. I think you meet all those standards except parking. Parking is an issue. I think you're going to have to get a variance because I think the requirement is 15 spaces. You only have nine. So that, that's something that, other than that, I think all the other general standards are met. I'm glad that an IA system is going in. I think that's important, although that's required. And you know, I was glad to hear that the gray water is not an issue. I thought that there might be a maximum on that, that you were going to exceed. But it seems that that's not a problem. And as far as the allowable flow versus the actual flow, you're well under those numbers. In summary, I think the project is in harmony within the neighborhood business zone in Springs. It's a substantial improvement, I think, from the existing establishment. I think it's going to be constructed within town zoning requirements and standards, hopefully. You're going to need that variance, as I mentioned, with regard to parking.
The parking might change depending on the use, once that's confirmed. So if it's retail, it would be 15. However, this will be confirmed and something will work with the applicant on.
Great, great. And just in ending, I think, in my, in my opinion, this furthers the spirit of homegrown, small business entrepreneurial spirit. I'm all for that. I'm glad that that's happening in Springs. And I wish you the greatest of luck and I hope you succeed. And I'm in favor of this application.
Thank you.
Thanks Lou. Eva, did you want to comment on this or you?
No, I was going to make comment about the parking, but it was just made, mentioned about the use. Yeah, I would think that would be the only problem. If it is determined retail, then the parking is going to be an issue.
Sure.
I, like Lou, am in favor of this project. I think it's a great use of the space. I think it will really add to the neighborhood. And I'm really happy that you guys are here before us. And I hope that we can work out my, my, I did have a comment about parking as well, but I was going to say that, you know, because so much of it, so much of the space is going to be used as wholesale or as production. I think that the retail, you know, we really have to determine just how big that retail space is. But I love this project.
Michael?
I am in support of this project. I visited the site today. Next to you is a pizza place.
Yeah.
And pizza and beer, my goodness. I think it's going to be very popular and the type of person is going to be there is me, Lou.
Yeah, so that, that's because it's going to be popular. Despite what you say, it's going to be popular. I'm concerned about the parking. I know years ago I would go, I went to the Apolic House and had to park on the side of the road and it was really just not a safe situation. So where are you going to get your barley and hops? Does it be locally sourced?
Some of it will be. Yeah, we've, we've already used local, local barley and hops in a few of our beers. It's a much smaller scale though, so it's hard to.
All right, great. Good luck. I love it. Right, there's hops grown in Emeganset.
Yeah.
Michael, is that, okay, yeah, thank you.
Bruce?
I really don't have anything more to add. I think this is a great project and yeah, good luck.
Reed?
Yeah, I thought Lou actually had a very good overview. I agree with all the previous comments. I wish you success to your business and I'd like to be helpful to you. I think a brewery in the Springs would be a nice addition to the community. You did mention some cost constraints and I'm mindful of that. But at the same time, you know, we've got to make sure everything's right here and conforming. I did have one question and that is, it was auto repair shop, which presumably would be kind of a nine-to-five sort of operation. And maybe we're getting ahead of ourselves with this question, but I mean, is this kind of a nine-to-five operation or is this nine to midnight or? And the reason for my question is, in the not-too-distant past, and perhaps I'm comparing an apple to an orange, but there was a brewery proposed in the village. And there were some very interesting comments from some of the neighbors that came out about that.
So. Certainly not till midnight, but I believe we listed proposed hours in the submission. Maybe, I think it was, I think we listed that, but it was not midnight. Yeah, again, not a, not a bar scene. This is a retail establishment.
And I think, just one more quick comment. I think you could probably, you can use the Montauk Brewery as kind of an example. You know, they're, they don't have seats inside. They're not open late, you know? And that really has been a boon to Montauk, so.
But they do have bench seating out front there.
They have, they don't have picnic benches anymore. They have like high-top tables that you can stand at, no seats.
We are proposing some.
They're proposing 16 seats.
Yeah, I know, yeah. So yeah, that's different. Inside, yeah.
Yeah, well, still.
I wanted to get up and speak just for a minute, if you would allow me to. Good evening, new chairman and members of the board, Britten Bistrain. My office at 9 North Main Street, East Hampton. I just want to, I've been helping Gunner and Lindsay and working with David and I thought that them telling their story was much more compelling than, than myself. But I wanted to add a couple factual details to the record just so that some of the planning issues, as you walk away from the table and you sort of mull over this and you're, and look at our new submit. As many of you probably know, I opened a brewery in West Hampton. I did all the work and the owner of it. And the thing about a brewery and its model in terms of use is that it's never really, it never becomes an evening place. It's always somewhere, it's really, you know, when we originally opened because we, you know, needed to make money, we were like, we're going to be open till nine o'clock. And at the end of the day, we're six years in right now and we open at one and we close at six. Because those are the hours in which people, you know, come and have a beer and then go out to dinner somewhere else. So the model itself of a brewery in the sort of, you know, family or limited tasting atmosphere, sort of self-living in a zone, I don't foresee that this could be a bar. There is no bar in there. But I just wanted to, you know, if you look at any other, there's so many breweries, you go almost anywhere and find that that's kind of consistent throughout the island. And we did take the parking, when we looked at this, we looked at the Montauk Brewery. And I believe their tasting room is something around 300 or 400 square feet. And then they have a production, so it's a very, it's a very good model. And Tom Priato didn't make that determination. Here, if, just so you have the numbers in your head, 29% of this, with one story, 29% of that first floor is, is a retail area. And that includes the bathrooms. And the balance of it is, is a production, which you never want the public in there. And the purpose of using the retail calculation is for 180 square feet, for people to come in and buy a shirt in a retail store. You don't want people in your production facility. We don't even get tours anymore because there's just too many moving parks and canning and it's wet, it's stinky, you know, it's, it's just not somewhere you want the public. So I just want to highlight that because so much of this building, 71% of this building is production warehouse that will have two employees in it. And that's why we designed the parking. We have five for the retail space, which includes people standing in the bathroom, and two for the production facility. And then we put two more spaces just because we could. So we do feel comfortable with our use and the town code and how the model of Montauk was modeled there parking. We used it and then we added a little bit. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear in the record.
Thank you.
Thanks, Britten. Where are you producing now? I'm just curious. There's a brewery there. Okay, interesting. It'd be nice to have it, have it home, right? Yeah, like others on the board, I support the idea. I think it's a really great addition to the neighborhood. And I think it's, you know, wonderful that you guys are Springs, Springs folk, you know? Just bring something really unique and interesting to the, to the neighborhood for sure. But having said that, you know, I just want to be kind of clear about intention and, you know, Britten has clarified some of this. But, you know, saying stuff like year-round socializing opportunities, you know, and then talking about limited onsite taste and it sort of sound like two different things to me. You know, there have been not only controversy about the proposed brewery in East Hampton Village that Reed mentioned, but there's also been another, there was another application nearby in Springs where the, you know, the idea that there would be alcohol served on premise was a really major concern. And this is right around the corner from you. So I think there's, there's got to be some way to, to really clarify a little bit about. I know, as Britten was sort of saying, the nature of breweries is such that it, it isn't sort of a bar, but we need to kind of really be certain that this idea of onsite tasting is kind of what it's, what it's limited to. And I think, you know, their use conversations, they really have to be clarified here. You know, is it wholesale? Is it retail? Are you a bar? You know, I think we need to really understand what use we're talking about. Because that will inform everything else that happens and what else we're able to approve and what else you might need a variance for. But I think you get the sense that everyone on the board is sort of with you on this. We want to work through those issues and make sure everybody is happy and the community is too on this. So more work to be done.
What's your brand?
Springs Brewery.
Springs Brewery. That's what it says on the.
It's around.
Yeah, it's good.
It's good, yeah.
Good. Thanks so much. Thank you, David.
Thank you guys.
Questions once again. Thank God for you guys. All right. Does the planning board agree with the planning department's assessment of additional information must be provided per town code? Necessary elements of a site plan?
Yes.
Does the planning board agree with the proposal is compatible with surrounding area?
Yes.
Is the planning board satisfied with the building inspector determination that the proposal should be considered a retail store? I think that's TBD. Yeah. Agree with that, everyone?
Yeah.
Somewhat of it, no.
A proportion, yeah.
All right. Thanks again. All right. So moving along, the final matter that we're going to, it's on for tonight is the Wayne Scott Commercial Center. This is a little bit of an unusual addition to a work session. This is really going to be an informational session. This is, this is the first of two work sessions that the planning department and the applicants have worked together on that we're going to be having over the course of the next few weeks. And this one, because the planning board hasn't really been actively engaged in this application since the public hearing, which was, I believe, in February of 2023, the idea here is that we, we're going to have a conversation and a presentation from our secret consultants and from the planning department on what's transpired since. You know, what are the communications been? What kind of documentation has been submitted? You know, where do we stand? And then from that, the idea is that we will, the recommendations will be made by our consultant. That'll be shared with us and with the applicant. And then we'll have an opportunity when the applicant is ready to have a substantive conversation. So we're not going to be asking for any public comment, you know, after this presentation. Just think of it as, this is information, okay? The applicant will have an opportunity to, to, to share at the end of the presentation, however.
Thank you, Ed, Tina, La Grande, for the planning department. I just want to make sure that our consultant team has joined, Dan Russo. Um, I just want to make sure that our consultant team has joined. Dan Russo, um, from White Osterman. And Hannah, our, our secret, outside secret counsel is here, as well as Peter Faro, um, from AKRF. Um, and Gwen Zabirichi from AKRF, they're, the two of those are, are the planning consultants. So I'm just going to give a brief, um, a very brief overview before I turn it over to Peter. As Ed you mentioned, tonight, we want to update the planning board on events that have transpired since the DEIS public hearing in February of twenty twenty-three, which is the last time the planning board as an entity interacted with the application. Um, I just intro'd our consultants. Um, some of the members of the board have not met them. Peter and Gwen were added during twenty twenty-four to the team to help facilitate a draft environmental impact statement review and coordination. Very quickly, after the public hearing and receipt of significant public comments in February of twenty twenty-three, the planning department had written a detailed comment report on the DEIS, noting our recommendation that the, um, planning board did not have enough information to proceed to seeker findings. And requesting that a dialogue between the planning department, um, and the applicant, applicant be opened in order to figure out a way forward. From there, a chain of events ensued, including a significant amount of correspondence between the planning department and the applicant and several meetings with the applicant where we coordinated, um, hands in hand with Sam Kramer, the then-chair of the planning board, um, as our main point of contact for the board. Peter from AKRF is going to go through the details of those interactions because we want to bring the board up to speed on all that has transpired just from a high level, so the board has that context. Tonight, we're not going to talk about the detailed technical analysis that was performed during that time. Um, we do want to have that conversation with the board, um, but that's not today. Today, we just wanted to update you so you're all aware of everything that has happened that we're aware of. And then in future conversation, hopefully, um, in February or soon after, we will talk about our recommendations for a draft scope for a supplemental EIS. So at that, this point, I want to turn it over to Peter. And Peter, if you want to share your screen, you can, or I can just flip through the presentation.
I'm happy to share. Thank you.
Okay.
And everyone can hear me okay? Sorry, I get nervous with you.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Did I hear it was very hard to hear me? I should speak up?
No, it was me.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Peter. Go on.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Um, as Tina said, my name is Peter Faro, um, with the planning and engineering firm AKRF. Uh, I'm based out of our White Plains office and have been working with the town on this project, uh, for a little over a year. Also been fortunate enough to work with the town on a few other projects, um, and, uh, am grateful for that opportunity. Um, as Tina said, this is, um, the first planning board meeting, um, that this application, the Wayne Scott Commercial Center has been, um, before the board, uh, since March twenty twenty-three, when the public hearing closed. So tonight, as Tina said, we want to give you an overview of what has happened, um, since that public hearing closed. Basically, there have been a lot of comments received on the EIS. There, as Tina said, correspondence, uh, meetings with the applicant. We received, um, new and additional information. And as Tina said, we're not going to talk about the state of the technical analyses. That'll be subject of a future meeting with the board. Um, and as both Tina and Ed said, this is leading up to, um, a decision that the planning board needs to make, acting in its capacity as secret lead agency on the next steps in the seeker process. So tonight, we're really just focusing on what's happened over the past nearly two years since this application has been in front of the board. Um, all of this information is in the public record, uh, for the application, but we wanted to make sure that we took this opportunity to kind of go over it, um, with you directly. That's just a little bit about us. Tina already talked about us. We don't need to go in that. So, uh, quick overview, um, for those who are not, uh, as familiar, the, this is kind of the basic outline of the project. It's about, uh, it's a, about a seventy, seventy and a half acre site in Wayne Scott. Um, the applicant proposes, it's a, excuse me, the, the majority of the site is a former, um, and reclaimed sand and gravel mine, um, sand mine. And, um, there are some existing uses on the project site, uh, mostly concentrated in the southern end of the site. Um, the applicant proposes to subdivide the site, um, into fifty commercial lots plus, um, two or three, uh, buffer lots around the edges. Two of those commercial lots, uh, would be larger than all the rest. They're in the southern end of the site. They would house, uh, two of the existing uses on the site. And the remaining forty-eight lots would be undeveloped, um, and would be planned to be, um, developed by separate entities over time with separate site plan approvals, um, et cetera. As part of the, uh, development, the applicant proposes to install new roadways, um, certain utilities, drainage systems, um, et cetera. So, quick overview, the DEIS for this project, um, was accepted as complete in November of twenty twenty-two. Comment period was held open until the end of March twenty-three. Um, between that time, the end of the comment period and, uh, let's call it April of twenty-four, there was a procedural pause, um, in the application. The applicant submitted new material. The department reviewed that material. And we're going to go through all of this in a lot more detail. This is just kind of the big picture. Between April and June, there were, uh, several meetings between the applicant and the planning department. And from June of twenty-four through now, there were additional submissions by the applicant. There was review by the planning department and consultants and the development of next steps and recommendations. And we'll go into all of that in a little bit more detail. So the DEIS comment period, um, there were, uh, there was a public hearing on February eighth, at which approximately fifty speakers spoke, uh, at two different timeframes. Written comments, all of which are in the public record, um, were received. Approximately a hundred and fifty-two letters, um, from members of the public, from various organizations. Uh, many issues were discussed. Um, you can read them all here. I think you are familiar with many of them. And there were, I want to note, some additional public comments received after the close of the comment period. Also in the public record, they occupy kind of an interesting spot in seeker procedure in that they don't necessarily have to be responded to, um, like a typical comment in a, in an FEIS. Um, but they do need to be considered, um, in, in kind of a, uh, in the board's review. And, and we can get into that in a little bit later. But again, all of that is in the public record. In addition to public comments, the board received comments from involved and interested agencies. The FAA, uh, the Water Authority, which opined that there was sufficient water capacity to serve the project. The New York State DEC, uh, commented. NISE dot provided some comments. Um, and the Suffolk County, uh, Department of Health Services, uh, provided comments. As you know, they, um, that department, um, oversees sanitary disposal and, and other items as well. Their letters had a few different, um, important themes that I'll kind of carry through. They required, uh, this is a direct quote from their letter, um, an analysis of any and all alternative wastewater treatment disposal methods, as well as a complete application, which application the applicant, uh, did make subsequent. The County Department of Health Services also requested additional soil and groundwater investigations. And they recommended the incorporation of additional, um, mitigation measures, to address any, uh, subsurface contamination. They also noted that they are the permitting authority for certain onsite activities, um, with regards to the storage of certain hazardous materials, petroleum products, um, and, and others. The Suffolk County Planning Commission also submitted comments, um, as an in, involved agency. As you know, the application was sent to them pursuant to, uh, the general municipal law for referrals. Um, the planning commission determined that the application, um, or referral was incomplete and required additional information, including an updated traffic study, coordination with NISE dot, um, and additional consideration of, uh, certain alternatives. After the close of the public comment period, the planning department, um, issued its own letter. This letter had their own comments, as well as summarized comments made by the town's other, uh, technical consultants, uh, which we'll get to. Um, as Tina said, um, the letter requested additional information and analysis and stated its opinion that, that information analysis was necessary, um, to provide the board with the information it needed to make its own seeker findings. There were, there were comments raised, uh, by the department around certain assumptions that were made across various impact categories that had to do with density and uses and, and the consistency of those assumptions across impact categories. Um, the letter noted that the project was, um, appeared inconsistent with certain aspects of the comprehensive plan and the hamlet plan. But it's also important to note that the subdivision itself is substantially dimensionally and use compliant, um, with respect to the existing zoning on the site. After the DEIS was accepted as complete, um, the zoning board of appeals made a determination that the subdivision itself is a planned industrial park use pursuant to the town zoning code. And that use, which is the subdivision, requires the issuance of a special permit. Uh, that was also mentioned in the planning department letter. Um, and as I said, the town's traffic consultant, engineering consultant and, um, um, subsurface and groundwater consultant also supplied letters, again, in the public record and were referenced in the town's letters. So that's what happened immediately after kind of the, the DEIS was accepted as complete and the comment period was closed. So after that letter was received, um, the applicant requested an adjournment of the application. Um, the board agreed and executed a stipulation, uh, among the board and the applicant, basically staying the timelines for review of the application pursuant to seeker and pursuant to, uh, town regulations until, um, a mutually agreed upon time. Um, the applicant requested that the department not appear before the planning board to discuss the comment letter in detail until the applicant had time to review it, um, noting that it was a, a very substantial letter. Uh, the applicant said they would be happy to, to meet with the department, um, and would let the department know, uh, when that, when they were ready. And also important to note, the applicant, um, strenuously objected to the department's recommendation to the board that a supplemental environmental impact statement was required. And they set forth their reasons, uh, for that objection. As we said, the department agreed, um, both, you know, recommended to the board to stay the timelines and also agreed not to discuss the comment letter until the applicant was ready. The department requested that the applicant contact the planning department, set up the meetings, um, and noted that there was information that needed to be provided and kind of a dialogue that needed to be had regarding how, um, various agency comments, um, were responded to. Um, and, and they reiterated, the department reiterated its recommendation of why they believe a supplemental was required, um, and provided a memorandum from the special seeker council, um, to that effect. A couple of months later, so now we're in September of twenty-three, uh, the applicant requested that a meeting was, be scheduled between the bo, planning board, planning department, um, and the applicant to discuss, um, the process moving forward and other items. Uh, at that point, the planning board chair responded, um, and advised that the, that in accordance with kind of previous conversations, uh, I'm, excuse me, previous correspondence, that the applicant should meet with the planning department before being on the planning board agenda. Um, and, you know, let the, let the applicant know it was their opinion that any technical reports that would be discussed, uh, obviously should be provided ahead of time. The planning board chair followed up with an email, uh, a couple of weeks later, um, letting them know that it would not be possible to place him on a twenty twenty-three agenda at that point, as it was now the middle of November. So after that correspondence, uh, the applicant, again, wrote a letter to the planning board chair advising that they were preparing a submission, uh, by the end of the year in response to the department's comment letter and suggested that, uh, perhaps a meeting with the department in January would be appropriate. Um, and, and agreed with the chair that, um, a meeting should happen between the department and the applicant prior to being on a board agenda. The chair responded to that letter, um, stating that they believed that timeline and procedural pathway was not, uh, well advised and was contrary to previous suggestions that prior to any submissions, that a meeting be held to discuss these issues and the pathway forward. Um, and they, the chair specifically noted that submissions that were made without the benefit of the planning department meetings could result in, um, delay of the application. Um, on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, um, the applicant made their submission, the, the submission that was noted in their November correspondence. And that submission, um, in terms of substance, um, had, uh, quite a lot. They, within it was a, an application for the special permit that was, uh, determined to be required by the ZBA. It included, um, the applicant's responses to the planning department technical review letter. And it included a new traffic impact study, among other materials. There was also a number of procedural, uh, assertions that were made, again, setting forth the applicant's opinion, uh, that a supplemental impact statement wasn't required, as well as the reasons, um, why they believe that to be the case. Um, as well as asserting that the planning board did not have the authority or the basis to require, uh, additional subsurface environmental testing and a request that the planning board process the application in it, in a regular way and allow the applicant to complete responses to all substantive comments. That, just as a note, that December twenty-three submission, uh, was seven to eight hundred pages. As we kind of set forth, it was not, uh, requested by the department or the board. Um, and so it didn't benefit from a discussion about the format, the topics, the approach, um, and the new analysis that was presented. The traffic analysis, um, you know, was, didn't benefit necessarily from having a discussion about the scope of that study. Um, so after that submission, um, early twenty twenty-four, there were several letters back and forth. Um, the planning board chair acknowledged receipt of the submission, uh, requested a replenishment of the escrow, uh, reminded the, the applicant that the deadlines continued to be stayed, uh, with respect to seeker, excuse me, and town. excuse me, and town review, and noted that, as was stated previously, the department needed to review all submissions before the meetings. And given that it was about 700 pages, that that was likely going to take some time. The applicant responded less than a week later with an escrow replenishment check and requested dates when the department would be ready for the meeting. So about two weeks later, the the planning board chair responded in two separate pieces of correspondence, provided time slots for the department and the staff and consultants to meet, suggested two meetings to start with in early April, and noted that there were still, in addition to some substantive disagreements, there were still two major procedural issues that needed to be addressed. One was the framework for addressing public comments. So not just the planning department's comment letter, which was addressed in the December submission, but the the balance of the public and agency comments, as well as the approach to responding to the Suffolk County Planning Commission, which is in procedurally is kind of an odd, interesting, unique condition in that the town is actually the applicant to the planning commission as the referring agency. And so the town has this duty to perfect that application, but obviously needs needs the information analysis from the applicant. So that needs to be worked through. So again, immediately in response, a couple of days later, the applicant agreed to the meeting dates, agreed to break out the responses to the planning commission, as well as to break out the approach and framework for summarizing the comments to ensure that they were addressed and to and to ensure that, as you can see, that both the teams, the applicant team and the department and their consultants would be satisfied that those comments could be meaningfully addressed. The applicant again agreed to replenish the escrow, but noted objections to certain consultant invoices as it as was their right within the framework of the agreement, setting up the escrow account. So immediately, not immediately, but prior to the first meetings between the applicant and the department, the applicant did submit various materials as as they indicated they would, including responses to the Suffolk County Planning Commission and a description of the process to identify and categorize the public comments. Not the categorization of the comments, but the process by which that categorization would take place. And again, you know, reiterated their opinion that an FEIS or Final Environmental Impact Statement be prepared and not a supplemental and asserted the the reasons supporting that that opinion. So moving on into April and June, three meetings were held. The first two were scheduled ahead of time. They were held at a town facility on Gan Road. The applicant was present, as well as their council and planners. That the planning department was represented along with the town attorney, Special Secret Counsel, and myself and Gwen to support the department. So briefly, I'm going to try to go through the the, not going to try, I will. I'm going to go through the agendas of the three meetings. They, again, those agendas are public record and they are in the public file and in the packet that was prepared. So we began the April 10th meeting, the first meeting on a procedural basis, just kind of laying out what the department believed the pathway to be, which was that the December 23 submission was was very likely to form a part of a formal secret document. There was a lot of information prepared and and it would definitely be able to form a part of a future document. But that the reality is the department still was of the opinion that additional information was needed in order to get, in order for the board to have sufficient information to get to a finding statement, which would close the SEACER process. So we indicated that the goal of the meeting was to discuss how to get that information. So we limit the back and forth and and are able to provide the planning board with information that they need in the most efficient way possible. The applicant again agreed on that and agreed to provide the public comments, which again form a very important basis in SEACER for next steps as it is the response to those comments from the public, from agencies, from organizations that kind of help to inform the next SEACER steps. We moved on substantively to to speak about the subdivision plat itself and the design and the documentation led by the the planning department's engineering consultant and supported by the applicant's engineer as well. We discussed the layout and the roadways, various easements and alignments of the new private roadways, as well as the existing private road known as Hedges Lane. We discussed stormwater, types of stormwater systems, what would be required, what documentation should be required, what improvements may be needed, and and that was discussed at length. Issues related to noise were also discussed. The department reiterated kind of its opinion, and again, the reasons therefore that an updated noise study was required and that it should follow the DEC guidance. AKRF and our Acoustics Group agreed to provide a recommended scope and parameters to the applicant of what it is that we believe the the noise study should 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 cover, and and the applicant could then provide a scope for kind of confirmation of this study. At the next meeting, about a week later, we discussed traffic. Unfortunately, the town's traffic engineers couldn't be there. There was a a late-breaking illness that was best served by them not attending. The applicant's traffic engineer did attend, and we we did speak through many of the traffic issues, issues regarding the layout of the site, the the traffic model that was used in the DEIS, as well as in the supplemental submission in December 23, issues related to assumptions on routing and trip generation, mitigation measures, DOT coordination, and agreed that follow-up directly between the applicant's consultant and the planning board's consultant would take place to cover the the precise next steps that would be needed. We then went into issues regarding subsurface contamination. The town's consultant from the FPM Group joined the applicant's consultant, also joined from Alpha Alpha Geoscience. We discussed some some difficult issues and some issues on which there was not agreement necessarily. We discussed issues regarding whether there was the need for additional characterization, additional sampling of the subsurface materials to, again, characterize certain areas. We discussed issues regarding potential mitigation measures. And again, it was a difficult conversation, but it was a candid conversation. And at at the end of the conversation, it was agreed that a white paper would be produced by the applicant that would help present some more information, present the existing information in in kind of a different way, also including information on site history, history of previous investigations, applicable standards. And there was an agreement to review the the scope, the contents, the table of contents, and approach of that white paper prior to it being produced, which which actually which did happen. That meeting went on to discuss issues of wastewater and nitrogen loading, different, again, difficult conversations, but meaningful substantive conversations regarding treatment systems, models, comparisons of different alternatives and impacts. Again, kind of resolution wasn't wasn't necessarily in the cards, but but again, there was this agreement to produce some more information and a summary of these various issues to better inform the discussions moving forward. We discussed, you know, to end that meeting, we discussed dates for for a third meeting. And again, kind of highlighted the need for the categorization of of public comments. So the final meeting, the third and final meeting was June 20. We began with, again, a procedural follow-up, you know, status of of kind of everyone's to-dos. We discussed the the need for and the implications of the special permit for the planned industrial park, which, as I mentioned, was determined to be required after the DEIS was complete. So it was not addressed in the DEIS because it was not a known requirement. Excuse me. And so we we spoke about how that that need for the special permit would influence various analyses within the DEIS. And and we noted that the the plan for the project obviously had to comply with the special permit criteria, but that the special permit criteria specifically consider and expect what what's called, what they, what is defined in the code as an integrated plan for development. And so we talked through kind of what that could mean, what that does mean, and how we might how the department, how the consultants might consider evidence of that integrated plan for development, how it could impact the overall layout. We also spoke through how to treat the existing uses on the site. Obviously, we needed additional information on those existing uses. As Tina said, according to some of the, according to department records, some of those uses on the site lack certificates of occupancy, some lack site plan. And this wasn't explicitly contemplated, discussed in the DEIS. There was a mention in the DEIS that site plans would be required. It was understood, the department understood, we understood that to mean when the lot lines got redrawn for the existing uses, the access and configuration and coverage, et cetera, would have to benefit from a site plan. But we didn't realize that the existing uses would would kind of need their own site plan today. So we spoke through kind of how to address that. And then we spoke about the potential next steps with the planning board and the department's recommendations to the planning board and how we move forward using all the information that was gathered, the analysis that's provided, and and the coordination that had occurred. So after those meetings were over, this is a little bit less, this last section, and I promise we're getting near the end, but the last section is a little less topical. I'm sorry, a little more topical and less chronological of kind of what happened after the end of the meeting. So the applicant produced, as was requested, several technical products. So there's a product on subsurface contamination and the various investigations that occurred on the site. There was a product on wastewater and nitrogen loading, a a new noise study, some traffic counts. And there was an annotation of DEIS comment letters and kind of a markup, so to speak, of kind of what comments came out of various letters. There was also an issue that the the board should be aware of with respect to the escrow, which was covering the board's consultant fees. There was an initial agreement back when the application first came in, the applicant and and the town executed an escrow agreement where the applicant agreed to reimburse the town's cost of their consultants up to the limit established in the SEACER regulations. And that limit, again, per state regulations, is half of 1% of the value of the land plus improvements. The value of the land is calculated as either the purchase price or the fair market value of the property as it is, as it appears on the tax roll. So as it's calculated on the tax roll. At the end of September, the applicant alerted the town that the limit was reached and and actually exceeded. The town notified the applicant that, you know, they would review the calculations, determine that the applicant was correct, that limit per SEACRA was exceeded per the assessment rule. The fair market value of the various tax lots was a little over $17 million. And the end, the town engineer estimated the site improvements at approximately $5 million. So per SEACER regulations, the maximum amount that the applicant can be required to pay towards the review of this project was $113,000. At that point, the applicant had already funded the escrow at $150,000. And so the town indicated that they needed to refund the applicant the balance of that money. So because of that, there was a temporary pause in consultant work, our work. But town staff continued to work on the application. The town board established a budget line to review the application and fund consultant works, and and we were re-engaged. And that funding is now coming directly from the town. So just a couple of other notes on some other correspondence after the meeting. The planning department and sent to the applicant, I guess it's about two weeks after the the final meeting, a summary of the action items and established kind of next steps. The applicant responded. Again, reiterating, they didn't believe that the next step should include an SEIS, that it was not required, and suggested that the department waited until the end of the final meeting to make that recommendation. And they also stated their belief that during the meet, during the meetings, the second meeting, the department agreed to withdraw its request or recommendation to the board, that additional site characterization was required. The planning department responded to that, stating its opinion that the department's recommendation with respect to an SEIS was pretty clear and consistently articulated throughout its correspondence, and that the meetings helped to establish a framework for how to address various topical issues. And noted that the department did not believe and did not in a in at in actuality withdraw its recommendation or change its recommendation that additional subsurface testing was required. There were some other correspondence that went back and forth. Some of this occurred around the times of various submissions that were made, others with respect, others occurred in and around the escrow. Others with respect, others occurred in and around the escrow correspondence. And all of this was kind of pointing towards the next steps, which if the planning board decides that an SEIS is required, would be the scoping for that SEIS. And so the applicant, you know, consistently requested that that process move forward. So at the end of November, the planning department sent a letter to the applicant, kind of establishing the path forward, that noted that budget modifications were finally in place to allow the town to pay the consultant, so that technical review could continue. And it indicated that the department would schedule work sessions with the planning board, two of them. The first is tonight, and the first was, you know, the purpose of this meeting is to update the board with a summary of the events and the correspondence since the close of the DEIS and to kind of index a bunch of that correspondence and submissions, which we did. And that is what has occurred tonight, just this kind of more procedural update. And then the second work session would be to discuss the next steps with SECA, specifically to discuss the planning department's recommendation for supplemental environmental impact statement. But it's noted that this is a planning board decision that has to be made, acting in the board's capacity as secret lead agency. And there's a lot of technical information that needs to be digested and discussed and certainly heard from the applicant as well. So the department agreed to provide the board and the applicant their detailed recommendations for a supplemental, as well as the scope or table of contents that it would recommend, and provide that information again to the department, excuse me, to the board and the applicant at the same time for review, and schedule a work session when the applicant's had sufficient time to review that information so that they could be ready to have that technical discussion. And that is the next work session. And so that's where we are now. I know it's a lot of material. And, you know, I can take certain questions, but again, we want to focus on the procedure and the correspondence tonight and not get into the substantive discussion of various environmental topics. Because one, it's already getting late. And two, we want to make sure that everyone's had enough time to be prepared for that. So thank you very much for your time and attention. And again, happy to discuss further if needed.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate the very thorough review of what's happened since the last time that this was in front of us formally. Excuse me. And we definitely look forward to getting your recommendations, as I'm sure the applicant does, and having a work session that's devoted to the substance of what happens next and, you know, the rationale for an SEIS. So as soon as we receive that and the applicant does, we'll have an opportunity to both digest it and come back for that second work session that you described. Mr. Egan, did you want to address the board? I think the idea here is that, or Mr. Tintle?
Mr. Tintle would like to address.
Oh, okay. Yeah, please. But and again, we're really here just to talk about this, you know, where we've come since the public hearing and, you know, where we're going to go procedurally.
Great. John Tintle, T-I-N-T-L-E. Good evening, board, welcome to the board members. I believe we're down to just two original board members since we originally submitted. Thank you, Tina, thank you, Peter, for your thorough review. But we're encouraged that the application has finally been put back on the agenda. Frankly, continue to be frustrated by it will only be reviewed, reasonably viewed as dilatory tactics by both the planning department and this board. This application was initially filed in January 2018, seven years ago. To remind you that the application proposes a reduced density as of right subdivision. The DEIS was finally declared complete and ready for public review in December 2022, over two years ago. In April 2023, four weeks after the closure of the public comment period, the planning department filed 118 pages of comments that asserted that after going through four rounds of completeness review and being accepted as complete and adequate for the purpose of public review, that the DEIS should now be deemed incomplete and/or require substantial revision or even the preparation of a supplemental environmental impact statement, which essentially triggers a redo of the entire SECA process. In response, our experts were forced to work during the next eight months to prepare a lengthy submission submitted in December 2023 that clearly established that the planning department's April 23 comments were nothing more than a baseless attempt to derail the application based on, one, backtracking of previous planning department and planning board decisions and guidance; two, backtracking by the planning board's experts; three, multiple false claims that the DEIS did not file the final scope adopted by the planning board; and finally, fourth, cherry picking of certain comments from the public hearing despite the fact that those comments conflicted with its own experts' comments in the record and reflected in the DEIS. We note that while the planning department's April 28, 23 submission is included in this evening's agenda, the applicant's 873-page December 2023 response was omitted. We then had to wait many months for three meetings, with the planning department and its experts held over a three-month period in April through June of 2024. At the conclusion of those meetings, we were promised a proposed scope for the supplemental DEIS by September of last year, three months after the conclusion of our meetings. We're still waiting for it. We retain New York litigation counsel, who, after reviewing the record of this application, have advised us that the above timeline clearly constitutes dilatory tactics by the planning department and this board designed to dissuade my family from pursuing this application. My family has owned this property since 1984, when we purchased it from the DeGait family. We reclaimed the former sand mine and surrendered our New York State DEC mine land reclamation permit and received our reclamation treaty bond back, signifying our successful completion of the reclamation in 1998. This is the third attempt by my family to develop the property, which, as you know, has been zoned as commercial industrial since the inception of zoning in the late 50s. Zoning status has remained unchanged by two different town comprehensive plans and the Hamlet study. We've spent millions of dollars and have devoted thousands of hours of my and our experts' time pursuing this application. Rest assured that my family remains committed to pursuing this application in good faith. Finally, I'd like to suggest the most reasonable path forward is the Hamlet Plan alternative that is included and extensively discussed in the DEIS. To date, the Hamlet Plan alternative has been completely ignored by the planning department, this board, and its experts. We've repeatedly been told that our submission does not properly implement the Hamlet Plan. We respectfully remind this board that the public uses called for in the Hamlet Plan, a public park for almost half the property, affordable housing, a train station, and public parking are inconsistent with the longstanding zoning classification for the site and therefore are beyond a private party's legal ability to implement. Moreover, as we have advised the board on multiple occasions, the only legal way for the town to develop a park at the site is for the town to purchase a portion of the parcel for that purpose. Longstanding New York Court of Appeals precedent have made this clear. To date, we are the only party to offer a way for the town to implement the public portion of the Hamlet Plan. Namely, we've agreed to the planning department's request to develop the subdivision in two phases. We've also offered to grant the town board five-year options to purchase Phase Two of the subdivision. The land subject to the options is sufficient to implement the public portion of the Hamlet Plan, but also greatly reduce the density of the subdivision. Our New York litigation counsel has advised us that it is legally untenable for the town to claim that our subdivision has failed to implement the Hamlet Plan when the town is the only entity with legal capacity to do so, but has failed to take any action. New York counsel has further advised us that denial on these grounds will not survive judicial scrutiny. The fact that our December submission was not included in the review, I think is important, and I implore the board to review that submission and the submissions that we have made subsequent to the meetings that we had with the planning department this past spring. As I stated, we remain committed to this process. We've been in it now seven years and will see it through to the end. I encourage any of the board members, especially new board members, if you would like to see or tour the facility, to contact me. I'm there every day and would be happy to lead you on a tour. Again, I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tintle. Appreciate your comments. Some of us may actually take you up on the tour. Yeah, so next steps are what they are, which is for us to review the recommendations of our consultants and the planning department. And, you know, we will, you know, obviously take those in as well as the 700-plus pages of documentation that we have to look over and take in your comments as well as we make a decision as to where we're going to go from here next, SEIS or no SEIS. So there's not much more that we can say about that at this point, you know, until we receive those recommendations and we have an opportunity to talk again based around that.
Can I just add? I'm sorry. The December 2023 submission of the applicant is linked in the presentation and it is on the web. We didn't just include it in the package, it was huge, the package already. So there was a link and it is on the web. I can definitely forward a link to the planning board just for easy access.
Okay. So what is in there?
On the web and linked and yes.
It's not in the PDF that you receive that is uploaded for this package, but the link to that material is in the package and the material itself is on the website and has been, along with the other submissions of the applicant. But Mr. Tintle's corrected that it was not included in that PDF of the packet.
Okay. But the public can access it?
Yes.
Okay. I think we're good for now. Thank you very much for your attention. This was very helpful to us and hopefully it was to you to remind you of where we've been, where we've come, where we're going. And we will speak again soon.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody, for that.
Yeah.
All right. So ends the work session. We have a couple of other things to discuss, a couple of housekeeping items first. Then we have to resume our minutes from the last meeting.
Dan and Peter and Glenn, thank you if you're not already on. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you.
So the first quick items, these are three very quick items. The first is pre-meeting protocol going forward. A couple of us have talked about how we want to manage this. Ava's had an opportunity to sit down on a few as a new member. Reed is going to sit in on a few, you know, coming up as well, like he did today. But, you know, once we sort of get past the newbie phase, we'll be opening this up to a third person to come on board, you know, as they have, you know, significant applications that would benefit from discussions before the meeting. And if there's more than one, you know, in any given meeting, we'll figure out a way to have people come in and out of the meeting. Because as you know, we're sort of limited to three. So in the coming weeks, you know, once Reed has sort of gotten up to speed on who everybody is and how we work things now, he was on the planning board before, of course, but things have changed a little bit. So I think it's important for Reed to take that spot. We'll just play this a little bit by ear, but it's our intention to continue to have people come into the meeting. It really makes this meeting go a lot better, a lot faster. The other thing, Jen actually brought this up, and I'm glad that you mentioned it. The annual disclosure statement that we're all meant to sign and give to the town clerk. If you haven't done that yet, please do. It does need to be notarized, but you actually, there are notaries in the town clerk's office. So if you fill it out, bring it to the office, there will be someone there to notarize it for you.
You don't need to do it, and Reed, I don't think you need to do it because it was for 2024, the year that just ended, so.
No, I was.
You were appointed.
Yes.
Oh, you were, so you do need to do it. Did you receive it?
No.
Okay.
I think Reed may still have to do it, we'll find that out.
I didn't have to do it when I started last year at this time, did you?
I don't think so. I was just going to ask, where do we get it?
Jody sent it.
Yeah, it's in your email, it's an email from Jody, right?
It's called.
Double check.
Yeah. ADHDHS form or something like that. And it's, yeah, and there is a notary, as Ed mentioned, at the clerk's office.
You have two of them, actually, so you should look out.
Yeah.
Well, that's where, you return it to the clerk.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, and they can notarize it right there.
And I believe that the meeting that they're all going to be reviewed at is the 31st, I think, so.
Yeah, they theoretically were due last week.
Yeah, they were due on the 16th, so if you haven't done that.
I went down to the clerk's office Tuesday morning and turned mine in.
All right, just a reminder about that. And then the final thing is, I wanted Tina just to talk a little bit about OpenGov and, you know, some new things coming down the line regarding paper.
And I'm glad that, you know, Ed and Jen, you were already thinking about how much paper we all use and the discharge of our duties here, and it is a bit excessive. One of the initiatives that the town board has asked us all to implement is OpenGov. It is an online application and permitting system. The planning department is going to be migrating all the applications that we currently manage to the online environment in the next few months. And we invited the board members to an information session just to preview what the changes that you are going to experience are going to be. You know, we are still going to provide you the same reports that we do now. We'll make sure you have access to the application materials, but the format, all those things will be different. And the purpose of all of this is really important, right? We're trying to enhance collaboration between town departments, enhance the efficiency with which we process applications. Just right now, so many touches really could be minimized. And then, you know, of course, reduce the amount of paper. We just have boxes and boxes and files and rooms and basement rooms. It's cavernous, the amount of paper. So we're really, you know, we know it's going to be a change, but we're hoping everybody will work with us to be comfortable with reduction there.
All right. So we'll learn, if we come to the session on the 7th of February, I believe it is, we can learn more about how it's going to.
Yeah, the details. And then, you know, we're also going to have a meeting with the applicant community. We haven't scheduled that yet, but we're going to invite everybody who files with us to a similar session that will go through how their interaction with us will change with this new system. And it's a really intuitive system, which is great. I mean, we all now interact with the environment of the, you know, the web all the time, filling out online forms and stuff like this. This system is very much based on kind of everything you do in those kind of rounds. It's very simple. You can kind of review your online queue, see where your applications are at. So I think it's really going to be great for the town.
Okay.
That's great.
It's a.
I'm not going to be able to make that. Will there be a tape recording of?
We weren't going to record it, but you're not the only person who asked, so I'll look into if we can get it recorded and.
How does this affect the current online information that's available for each meeting, actually? You know how you can go on the meeting?
Yeah, we're still going to do that because we want to make sure that both the board and the public have access to like all the information they need to follow along with the meeting.
How is this new thing going to differ from what I can get online right now?
In terms of the meeting information, it will not. We're not going to change that. But in terms of, you know, how you guys all have a mailbox right now and every time something comes in, you can get it in there, we're not going to be doing stuff like that anymore. We're going to be sending you an email with a link or a PDF to the files, asking you to review them.
So in other words, files that are not available online right now at the planning board's site, which we get in our mailbox in paper form, will now, that, those documents in paper form will be available online to us, that's the difference?
No, the speed with which we like release those documents isn't going to change, just like your first viewing of them, and that will change. So.
What about the documents themselves? Right now, we get a planner's report online.
Yeah.
We get a meeting's agenda and you can go onto the agenda and look at every application.
You'll still get that. That won't change.
So what am I going to get new that's not online right now?
You will not get the paper.
The all the background stuff.
And the applicant also will be, will apply via this online portal as well.
Yeah, so they're going to upload.
The fire marshal's determination.
So right now, the big stuff that I get in my mailbox usually are the plans.
Yep, you're not going to get that anymore.
The problem is that when you get a plan online, it's so small sometimes that you can't make it out.
Right.
You know, usually the paper plan is as wide as this table.
Right. So
So how did you address that issue?
So we, and that's why I wanted to have the information session with the board so we could get everybody's feedback and make sure that the board's needs are still met in the new system. The thought was we would take one paper copy per submission for both the file and anybody who felt like they needed to do the paper copy. That's preliminary. That might not be enough. Maybe we'll take two copies per submission, one for the file, one for people to look at. But we're not going to, right now, we take nine. Okay. And nine, you know, for like a big project, it's boxes and boxes and it's a waste.
Yeah.
So one, maybe two, and like I'm saying, very preliminary stuff right now. We wanted to talk to everybody before we finalized the approach, you know, like to like let us tell you what we're thinking. You tell us what you need. But that's the thinking. One or two maximum per submission. And we all will have to adapt to the online. I mean, I review most plans digitally, but for some big complicated ones, you do have to unroll the paper. So, you know, I get it.
One gross example of this terrible paper waste is this application to Wayne Scott Commercial Center. I have in my office four or five binders this thick, which the information that you just sent, the PDF form, which was 500 and some odd pages, it's so much easier to screen and go through it and read online because you can scroll up and down, you can reference stuff, go back to it. It's harder to do with the paper itself.
An EIS is a perfect example of something that should never be printed, in my opinion. They're always really, really long. And aside from myself, having read some of them cover to cover, I don't think many people do. You know, you really look at the stuff that interests you and skip around. So yeah, huge reports, that's not going to be, we're not doing that anymore. So more to come. Please join us and we'll try to record that session. So people who aren't there.
Is this a state initiative? Is that where all this comes from?
No, no, this is the town board wanting to, you know.
That's great. That's terrific.
It is. It's a great idea.
Great. Thanks, Tina.
I just wanted, our technology department has done a ton to get this happening and really, really has been great. So I want to just thank them.
Good. Thumbs up to them. Absolutely.
Yeah, for sure.
All right. The final thing is to adopt the minutes. Did you want to make us?
Yes. Well, I wanted, we wanted to make that one change. Wanted to add to the minutes, the notation that the board discussed and decided not to pursue an Article 78 proceeding against the town on the
Yeah, I think it should
Senior Center. I think that should be recorded. But after that change is made, I move to adopt the minutes.
Second. All in favor? All right. We need another motion.
I move send me.
Second on that. Okay. Thank you.